Hey, how you doing Frank?
Oh, oh, oh. Things are good Dennis. How about you sir?
Okay.
Good, that's good. This should be pretty short tonight, hopefully, you know?
Yeah, hopefully.
Hello, hello. How are you doing sir?
Hi. Good, good, good evening, how are you?
Yeah.
Hey Ram.
Hi, how are you?
Hey Henry.
Hey.
Good, glad you're here, it's Lisa. We'll do our best, Henry.
Can you get the volume?
You too, be safe.
Thank you Henry.
Good evening, good evening everyone.
Hi Kevin.
Well, this is Representative Flanagan, wait another minute or so, making sure that everybody's on before we start.
One good thing about these Zoom meetings is that right, if it's a heavy storm like we've had tonight, you don't have to cancel the, right, the meeting, right?
That's looking at the glass half full.
I guess that's how you look at it.
I thought there was a motion from Dan to cancel the meeting tonight, I didn't hear that Dan.
Nobody seconded it.
Alright, I guess we're ready to roll here. I'd like to call the meeting to order, this is a special meeting tonight, the RTM will hold a special Zoom meeting on Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, at 7:00 PM to consider and act upon, act upon the following matters. Number one, review of remote meeting requirements, just remember, anybody speaking must state their name, full name every time they speak. Another.
May I speak to that? Agenda item please Dennis.
While we're talking about everybody that speaks needs to identify.
You're speaking about, you're speaking about, uh, remote meeting requirement, that's the agenda item.
Correct.
Can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead Mr. Cook.
Here's the thing. Last meeting, I sent a letter saying that I felt a number of other citizens feel that, you know, there's been problems through the building, uh, you told me to write to the governor. And I did, and you probably saw the letter. You think that's really necessary, that we have to get the governor with all he has to do involved in our issues down here? Do you really think that's necessary?
Uh, Dennis Flanagan is speaking, uh, Dave, you wrote the letter Wayne, it's up to you, it's up to the governor to respond to you.
No, but I think it's kind of ridiculous and quite frankly embarrassing that the RTM cannot weigh in on as citizens concerned about Zoom. I mean, for you to somehow refer citizens to the governor because he was the one that required through 9B that we go to remote meetings, I don't understand quite frankly, with all respect, what you're thinking. I mean, if you have a problem with Zoom, shouldn't that be the town's issue to resolve, why are you sending citizens to the governor?
I don't know Wayne, that's, that's, that's my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Mark Rikio, can we start the meeting?
No, we can't Mr. Rikio, why don't you go smoke a cigar, because the point is, is a very.
I already, I already smoked a cigar.
It's a very valid.
Alright, now. Continuing on item number one, I would just like to state that tonight, RTM and public can speak on items on the agenda. I will not allow any personal attacks or insults to RTM members, elected officials, or anyone else for that matter. I would like to expect, I would expect persons speaking to items on the, on the agenda to be professional when speaking. And speak only to the items on the agenda. Because this is a special meeting, there is no minutes to be approved, no letters of correspondence, and no other business. Okay. The clerk will call the roll call.
Okay, this is Donna L. H., RTM clerk. Um, Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman is present.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, present.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson's here.
Representative Austin.
Representative Austin is here.
Representative Black.
Representative Black is present.
Representative Brockett.
Representative Brockett is present.
Representative Conklin.
Representative Conklin is here.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson is here.
Representative Erlanger.
Representative Erlanger, present.
Representative Flanagan.
Flanagan is present.
Representative Greenberg. Representative Greenberg. Does anyone see her? Okay. I will mark her absent, let me know if she comes in. Representative Bacon.
Representative Bacon is here.
Representative Healy.
Representative Healy is present.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw is present.
Representative Hines.
Representative Hines is present.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham is present.
Representative Jackson.
Representative Jackson's here.
Representative Kelly. Representative Kelly. Representative Lake is present, Representative Free.
Representative Free did cigar.
Representative Rikio.
Representative Rikio is present.
Representative Simber.
Representative Simber is here.
Representative Tresta.
Representative Tresta is here.
Representative Sires.
Representative Sires present.
Representative Sumro. Representative Sumro.
Yeah Donna, this is Tom Brockett, she's gonna be absent tonight, thank you.
Thank, thank you Tom. Representative Stupanic.
Representative Stupanic here.
Representative Sullivan.
This is Representative Sullivan here.
Representative Turelli. Representative Turelli. Absent.
I see her name.
Yeah Donna, she's on the call, she's just not answering right now, maybe she's muted.
I saw her. Yeah, I do see her name there, okay. I will mark her present then. Um, Representative Toohill.
Yeah, this is Representative Toohill, and I'm present.
Representative Wells.
Representative Wells is present.
Okay, so just to review, I have absent Representative Sumro, Representative Kelly, and Representative Greenberg. Um, ex officios, I'm trying to scan the screen, um, I am seeing.
Jamie Cosgrove here.
Thank you. Thank you, does anyone? Lisa Arpin, yes, thank you. Um, is Selectman Dunbar here? Anyone see him? Or anyone else? I don't think I see anyone else. Okay, so, we have 27 members present.
Okay, we have a quorum then. Representative.
Moderator. Moderator.
Go ahead. Let, go ahead Mr. Cook, go ahead. Mr. Cook, go ahead.
You're muted, Mr. Cook.
Leave it that way.
Can I speak? That's really funny Peter, you know, you're a wonderful representative of this town. Really, really, very mature.
Okay.
Here's what I'd like to ask, here's what I'd like to ask. Can you, can you explain to us, Mr. Moderator, the special meeting requirements and why, for example, we don't have the correspondence and the new items to come before the RTM? Cause I spoke with Freedom of Information, and the fellow up there told me that all this is, is a postponement of last week's meeting. So why, if it's just a postponement, do you take items away from the agenda?
Representative Flanagan here, on special meetings, Mr. Cook, we don't approve minutes, we don't have correspondence or letters, or any other business cannot be added to the call. It's only the items that are on the agenda can be, can be heard. That's a special, that's a special meeting.
Where do you get that? Where do you get that information, I mean, what's your guidelines for that policy? Cause I can't find it anywhere, and Freedom of Information didn't know about it, so where do you get the fact that you can remove items that were on the agenda last week?
That's, that's, that's the rules of a special meeting, Mr. Cook.
No, it's not, no it's not, that's what I'm saying. I'll check, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll check on it, I'll be doubly sure, and I'll come back next meeting, and I think you're doing these special meetings incorrectly. And you're locking out the citizens once again, and that's what I'll say now, but I'm just going on record and saying I'll check into it.
Hey Mr. Cook. Moving on, Representative Flanagan here, we're moving on to item two, three, four, and five. Uh, these items will be re-referring, I will turn this over to Peter, Representative Black. Um, the committee did not meet on these items, so therefore, uh, Mr. Black will make a motions for re-referral. Representative Black.
Yep, somebody keeps muting me, but, um, yes, Representative Peter Black, Rules and Ordinances did not meet, uh, so I ask that these items, uh, two through five be re-refered and put that in the form of a motion.
This is Representative Sullivan seconding that.
Okay, Representative seconded that motion, uh, any discussion from members of the RTM? Hearing none, any, any discussions from members of the public?
I'd like to have a couple things to say about that please.
Okay, Mr. Cook, go ahead.
First of all, and I guess this is going R and O, but I don't know who thought up the idea of increasing citizens petitions from 50 signatures to 250. I mean, when you look at this, and I just want the RTM to think about this in the meantime before it goes R and O, and believe me, I think not only myself, but other people have plenty to say about it then. The five citizens petitions that were submitted all were vital to this community. Four of them were considered in multiple meetings, and four of them had actions taken upon them. The other thing I want to say, and this is extremely important, the one that didn't, and I'd like to speak to that tonight underneath a different agenda item, the one that didn't was removed in the most Bush league tactic I've ever seen on the RTM by Representative Black and Representative Ingraham. Now my point is this. All five of those petitions were legitimate. Very legitimate, and they brought up issues that I think interested and were important to this community. Now why, all of a sudden, are you deciding that the signature should be increased five times? Why, who, whose idea is that? Because to me, that's just trying to suppress the citizen, that's all it's doing. And is it because, you know, you can't handle the petitions, is that what it is? You're afraid of the petitions, is that what it is? Is that sure the way it sounds to me? I mean, I'll deal with this, and we will all deal with this, in R and O. But once again, this RTM could be ashamed of itself for even remotely considering something like this.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Rikio. Um, I will say that, well, Mr. Wayne, Mr. Cook does have a point. I'm looking at the Charter of the Code. And it does say on page, uh, A236, colon, 2, that upon receipt of a petition signed by 50 electors asking that an item of town business be placed on the agenda. Uh, he, he is, he does make a point that it is 50 electors. So, you know, we should look at that, and if it is only 50 electors, then that's what it should be.
May I say one more thing?
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Wait, Representative Black, go ahead.
Uh, the motion on the floor is to re-refer. That's what everyone should be addressing. The re-referral, whether they want it re-refer.
I'm, I'm addressing the re-referral, I don't even think you pay that much attention to it, can I speak one more time on that please? I wanted to say this, no.
Lot of comments.
Excuse me. Excuse me, do I have?
Go ahead Mr. Cook, for the long time on this, okay?
This is very important, cause back in 2009, 2010, a number of citizens and a number of RTM members worked very hard to put the citizen petition motion or measure in the town code. Now what happened was, the Democrats last.
Mr. Moderator, this is, this, this is Representative Ingraham. This discussion can be held at R and O, just like every other agenda item. It's not, it's, the motion is to re-refer. If he doesn't want it to be re-refered.
Referral, I'm talking about re-referral, can I speak to that please?
That's not what you.
If you're speaking.
It's about. It's about re-referral. About re-referral, here's my point. Here's my point. The Democrats didn't like what was on the petition, so Representative Sullivan, and he'll speak to that, made a motion and they passed it to take the citizens' petitions off completely. Then what happened is, the administration's changed, and who of all people, the very first thing the Republicans did under Representative Ingraham was to put the petitions back on. So, what is it people, because the petitions don't go your way? That you want to take them off when it, or make them more difficult, is that what we're dealing with here? So my point about the re-referral, don't re-refer this thing, just get it off of the agenda, because it's an absolute waste of time.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded for re-referral, any, for any other public comment on this? Hearing none? All those in favor? Is there any no votes for the re-referral on this item? Is there any no votes on the re-referral on this, on these items? If not, these item number two, three, four, and five has been re-refered.
Dennis, you may want to ask, Mr. Flanagan, you may want to ask for abstentions.
Uh, any abstentions, correct. Okay. Item, the item.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this is Town Clerk Arpin, for the record, and for the clerk, Rep. Greenberg has joined the meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, may I also ask, did that need a second, or did that need a second?
That was before the re-referral.
Yes.
Uh, this is Representative Sullivan, I seconded Representative Black.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Sullivan made that, okay? Item number six on the agenda, to consider and if appropriate, adopt the 2021 meeting schedule for the RTM. Uh, I believe everybody has a copy of that. And all meetings will begin at 7:00 PM, and will be held remotely via Zoom or in person at the Firehead Coors, 45 North Main Street, second floor training room. Hopefully, maybe we'll be there. 2021 schedule, January 13th will be special because of the 30-day window of approving the 2021 meeting schedule. February 10th, March 10th, April 14th, May 11th is the budget. June 9th, September 8th, October 13th, November 10th, and December 8th. Do we entertain a motion to accept the RTM meeting schedule for 2021?
So move, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Toohill.
Representative Brockett.
Is there a second?
Representative Brockett will second that.
Okay, there, Representative Flanagan here, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion from members of the RTM?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Yeah, Representative Henshaw, go ahead.
Just a point, in the, um, discussion with the FOIA representative from Hartford, he had recommended that, that, that when meeting schedules for the year are established, that it might be prudent to include January of the following year in that schedule, so that if, we, we wouldn't run into the same problem we're running into right now when we establish the 2022 schedule, and if we could have a regular scheduled meeting if we didn't meet the time time requirements. And he, he recommended that you do a 13-month schedule instead of a 12-month schedule. Um, that's just, just a point that made sense to me.
Point of information, um, Mr. Moderator, Representative Toohill.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, I just checked 2022 calendar, and, uh, so, so the RTM would fall on the 12th of January. That's a Wednesday, thank you.
Of 2022.
That's correct sir.
Is that? Okay. Alright. Any further discussion on approving the calendar here for the 2021 meeting schedule and the one item for January 2022?
I have a quick question. Uh, this is Representative Wells.
Representative, go ahead, Representative Flanagan, go ahead Representative Wells.
I thought that we usually included July and August, and then canceled them later if we didn't need them versus not including them and adding them later. I thought it was easier to drop a meeting than to add one, but I could be completely wrong.
Yeah, Representative Flanagan, we don't normally include July and August, we don't meet in those two months, if it's, if we have to, those will be classified as a special meeting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion from members on the RTM?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Yes, Representative Henshaw.
Do, do, do we need to, do I need to, um, recommend an amendment to this motion in order to add that January?
Um, it, it, it should be okay, we're, we're, we're just approving it because of, uh, Representative Toohill, the July, the January addition of that January meeting should be fine.
Okay.
Any further discussions from members of the RTM? Are there any no votes? Are there any no votes? Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the calendar has been approved, 21 and the one additional item of 2022. Uh, let's move on to item seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve an agreement between the Town of Branford and the Town of Branford Employees UPS EU, the June 30th, 2022. Representative Alphon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Admin services were this at our December 3rd meeting. Um, just to cover some of the highlights of this contract, it ranges, it covers 22 positions across various town departments. Um, ranging from zoning enforcement officer to animal control officer all the way to the library admin assistant, as well as other, uh, town departments. The, uh, contract date spans July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022. Um, respectively with a 2.5% wage increase retroactive to July 1st, uh, 2020, and a 2% increase on July 1st, 2021. Additionally, the contract eliminated, um, eliminated who are hired after the ratification date to be eligible for a payout of accrued sick days. There is also an increased percentage of medical and dental costs to the employees effective July 1st, 2021. This was approved in committee unanimously with a seven to zero vote. I'd put that forward to the full RTM.
Motion on Representative Flanagan, a motion on Florence, it's been seconded to approve this contract, any discussion from members of the RTM?
Yes, Representative. Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Brockett, I have a question.
Representative Brockett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, uh, Chairman Alphon, you were copied on an email this afternoon after I asked the Human Resources Director a question about this collective bargaining agreement. Apparently, there was some, um, confusion over the sick leave payout language as there was no date inserted uh, with respect to who gets this benefit and who doesn't get this benefit, so, um, the Human Resources Director, who I believe Margaret is on this call, clarified that to insert the date 2014 in the collective bargaining agreement. So I just want to make sure that when the body votes on it, it's their understanding that that, that is the date that'll be included in the appropriate section with respect to that sick leave payout. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Sullivan.
Representative Sullivan, go ahead.
It's a contract, so I will, oh, this is Representative Sullivan, it's a contract, so I'll just make a comment about the agency fees language. I, uh, you know, I, I, I don't think the Janus decision was a good thing to happen, but I am glad to see that this contract has, uh, what I see as more, uh, positive language than some of the previous contracts that I had voted against. Um, this is the deal with the checkoff fee for, uh, agency fees for the members of the union. Um, and so it's not just being stricken from this agreement. Um, so I, I, I think that this is a, this is a contract that I will be supporting. The language is, uh, stating that members would have to, uh, in writing, opt into paying their agency fees, I think that's great. Um, I would prefer that they'd have to do writing to opt out, but this is much better than the previous contracts where it was completely stricken. And I just want to make sure that, um, our unions are as strong as they possibly can be in this town, and that they aren't losing the needed funds that, uh, to benefit their members, so I will be voting in favor of this, uh, contract, thank you.
Anyone else from, uh, the RTM wishing to speak on this item, Representative Flanagan here?
Yes sir, yes, can I speak, uh, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Representative.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Just a question on clarification of the, you know, right, uh, I'm still not clear, okay, so the issue is, you know, of the 22 employees in that union, uh, I, I still am not sure who is eligible to cash in when they re. And up to 12 of their unused sick days, is it? I'm still not sure. All the employees that were hired after, or 2014 and going through, through 2020? Oh. You know, so, so, that's my question, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Representative Flanagan here, Representative Alphon, have any comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, um, I'm just looking at the email that Representative Brockett had referred to previously, I haven't, had not had a chance to see it yet today. Um, but just from what the HR Director had noted, that the date for the new TA should be July 7th, 2014, as no new hire after this date will receive paid out sick time. Uh, the new information was included, this date was not the content, uh, content of the article, my apologies, thank you. Um, so it doesn't exactly state how many employees, but it looks like anybody after, hired after July 7th, 2014.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing?
Okay, thank you very much, that clears it up, thank you.
Yeah. Uh.
Representative.
Representative, Representative Flanagan here, I believe the HR Director is on the, uh, Zoom meeting, I don't, Margaret, do you have any comment on that?
Um, I'm sorry, this is Margaret Liberta, um, yes. Chairman Alphon is correct, and there was an administrative error, and, and anyone hired after July 9th, 2014 as it appeared in the prior contracts and approved will not receive any time payout, um, if your prior date is July 9th or later. Um, the reason we included it in this contract is the date was never specified in the former contract, and we were trying to clarify it for everyone. So, long story short, um, that was really the issue.
Okay, um, there's a question I'd like to ask, uh, is a question please? Okay, well, so, alright, so that clears it up, thank you so much, so this is my last question, so of the 22 employees in this union, how many of them, you know, uh, how many of them can cash out up to 12 unused sick days, please?
Um, this is Margaret Liberta, Republican. This is Margaret Liberta, Representative Tohill, I'm sorry, don't have those numbers with me. This is the first time I've heard that particular question, but I could certainly email you tomorrow with that answer.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Liberta, thank you.
Representative Flanagan here, is there any other comments from the RTM?
Mr. Chairman, this is Representative Riccio.
Representative Riccio, go ahead.
I'd like to just make a comment, which I want to make sure of something. So regarding this particular contract, you know, at first, when I heard about it and read more about it, I wasn't sure if I was going to support this contract this evening. I called the HR director, Margaret Liberta, this afternoon. We had a brief discussion about it. And the one thing I like about this contract is, and make sure, I want to make sure I have my facts correct. It sounds as if, or appears that any new employee would be raised at 75% of the salary for the first year. Second year, it would be at a 90% or 95%. I don't have the contract in front of me right now. Can the HR director just confirm that?
Representative Flanagan here, Margaret, can you confirm that?
There's been no change in the contract on your prior recommendations or approved recommendations in the past, contract in that area is the same.
So does that mean the first, if a new employee is hired, they come in at 75% of the salary that's documented?
The new employee can unless there's an M L A that's done or it's been screened by the department that overrides that. I mean, had some very, very difficult hiring at that percentage increase. And depending on the experience of the employee coming in, we certainly don't want to lose the talent we need. Which of course, based on the contract.
Yeah, I understand that, that the administration has the right to do that. The only reason I like that part of the contract is, you may get someone who may not be, have the experience, they come in at a less experienced. And, you know, I think it's important that we hire someone at a lesser salary amount and don't set them at the full salary amount. And I like that about the contract. And so I'm, the other thing that the HR director pointed out is, I think she mentioned something like 40 to 60% of the employees work for the Town of Branford or live in the Town of Branford. And I think that's important. The other thing that she really pointed out to me was, and I did a little research this afternoon, that the, you know, I asked the HR director, are these salaries, in her opinion, you know, are they competitive salaries to other towns? And she assured me they are. I did a little fact finding and, and they are competitive with other surrounding towns. So that's one of the reasons I am going to support. Initially, I was not going to support this tonight, but I've changed my mind and I will be supporting this contract this evening.
Okay, Representative Flanagan, or any other members of the RTM wishing to speak to this? Anybody from the public wishing to speak to this? All right, the clerk, because this is a contract, Donna, this will be a roll call vote. A yes vote is to approve the contract, a no vote is you're against.
Representative Adelman.
Representative Adelman votes yes.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, yes.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson votes yes.
Representative Austin.
Representative Austin votes yes.
Representative Black.
Representative Black votes yes.
Representative Brockett.
Representative Brockett votes yes.
Representative Conklin.
Representative Conklin votes yes.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Erlanger.
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Haken.
Representative Haken, yes.
Representative Healy.
Representative Healy votes yes.
Representative.
Representative Henchel votes yes.
Representative Hines.
Representative Hines votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Ingram.
Representative Ingram votes yes.
Representative Jackson.
Representative Jackson, yes.
Representative Leach votes yes. Representative Pre.
Representative Pre votes yes.
Representative Riccio.
Representative Riccio votes yes.
Representative Semper.
Representative Semper votes yes.
Representative Sresta.
Representative Sresta votes yes.
Representative Sires.
Representative Sires, yes.
Representatives DePanic.
Representatives DePanic, yes.
Representative Sullivan.
Representative Sullivan voting yes.
Representative Torelli.
Representative Torelli votes yes.
Representative Tohill.
Yes, this is Representative Tohill, voting yes.
And Representative Wells.
Representative Wells also votes yes.
Okay. So it is unanimous.
Representative Flanagan here, okay, the contract has been approved unanimously. Moving on to item eight and nine. Eight is a transfer from the Board of Police Commissioners. And nine, it pertains to the Branford Point Seawall and Warfar improvements. For a point of information, Public Services Committee will not meet in the month of December. They will pick this up in their January meeting. There is an additional item that is not on the call that we, I found out that because it was a personal issues of the fire department, the assistant fire chief and the fire marshal, the RTM needs to act on that. That will, that will be sent to Public Services Committee, which I already have, and that will be on the call in, on January. So Representative Conklin's motion on those two items will be to re-refer. Representative Conklin.
This is Representative Conklin, and yes, the Public Services Committee, or more to the point, the chair was not quick enough to hold a special meeting to cover actually the three items. And so therefore, on January 7th, our committee will meet and have those three items plus anything the Board of Finance might add between now and January 7th. And so I do move that we re-refer item eight and nine and know that I am adding the other personnel issue to our docket on January the 7th.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Brockett, I'll second that motion.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, it's been a motion made to re-refer and it's been seconded by Representative Brockett. Any discussion from members of the RTM? Again, this is a procedural matter and for a re-referral. Any, any discussion from members of the public? Hearing none? Are there any no votes for the re-referral? Are there any no votes for the re-referral? Are there any abstentions? Okay, item eight and nine is re-referred and with the addition of the fire transfer. Moving on to item 10. To hear a request from the Finance Director regarding foot park appropriation from increased revenue from fiscal 2020 and to consider and if appropriate approve the following transfers and resolutions. General Fund Increase Foot Charitable Trust 50,000, Increase Operating Transfer Out Fund 750,000, and then Fund 700 Description Transfer In 50,000, and also Foot Park Tennis Course 50,000. Transfer and resolution from the fund balance resolved that the Board of Finance recommends through the RTM an increase in appropriations from the fiscal year 2020, general fund budget from 116,119,944 to 116,269, at 269,944. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from the increased estimated revenue received from the foot trust and will be used to increase the budget for the tennis court improvements and park. Representative Black.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Black. As I said earlier, Ways and Means did not meet, but we'd like to move this item forward. This is a prior fiscal year item. So I'll move to waive the referral to the committee and Rule 441, waive that rule.
Representative Ingram, I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor and seconded by Representative Ingram to waive Rule 441. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Think it's by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, Rule 441 has been waived. Okay, Representative, this is Representative Flanagan, okay, Representative Black, continue, please.
Thank you, this is Representative Black again. Normally, we receive $200,000 every year toward operating expenses of Foot Park. This year, or rather fiscal year 2020, the fiscal year which we're wrapping up, which ended at the end of June, we received an additional $50,000 from the Foot Charitable Trust, which was for capital needs at Foot Park. Those funds are now sitting in the operating budget. If we fail to make this transfer, then they will flow into the undesignated fund balance. This transfer takes that 50,000 out of the operating fund and puts it into the capital funds, which do not expire for the tennis court project. The ultimate end here is that it's likely we will have less of a pull from the Rec Department Fund, which is currently slated to fund 175,000 of the tennis court project. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this transfer and the accompanying agenda increasing last year's budget and look for a second to that motion.
Representative Flanagan will second that motion.
Representative Flanagan here, motion was made by Representative Black, seconded by Representative Brockett. Any discussion from members of the RTM?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Pre.
Go ahead, Representative Pre.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Pre. I had the opportunity to be down at Foot Park a couple of weeks ago and I just want to compliment the Board of Recreation, Alex and his staff. They've done a tremendous job in bringing those tennis courts back to life with the resurfacing of the courts and the new fencing. So I'm enthusiastically supporting this transfer and I'm looking forward to that project being completed. Thank you.
Okay, Representative Flanagan here, any other members of the RTM wishing to speak to this? Any members of the public wishing to speak to this? Okay.
Flanagan.
Representative, oh, Mr. Paluzzi's on.
Yeah, sorry.
Identify yourself, please.
Alex Paluzzi, Director of Parks and Recreation. I would just like to thank Mr. Pre for those kind comments. But more importantly, I just want to make sure I thank a lot of other departments were involved with making this happen. And I just want to make sure I acknowledge them. Our Town Engineer, John Hoffley, and Assistant Town Engineer, Jen Aquino, and also Public Works Director, Gary Zalinski, and Selectman Cosgrove, really helping us along with this job. There's a lot more that goes into it. I think you'll see also, when we make a nice viewing area in a garden with some pollinator gardens and there's already a rain garden there, I think it'll be really nice for people to be able to sit out there, some of the, you know, the residents that sit out there, but I just want to make sure that I thank that the Public Works Department, as well as the Branford Parks, my Branford Parks Maintainer. So we're getting there, but I just wanted to make sure that they, I thank them. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak to this? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion by Representative Black? Are there any no votes? Are there any no votes? Are there any abstentions? Okay, the item passes. Moving on to item 11, Letters and Petitions, R and O. First one is Request to Review the Code of Ethics. Representative Black.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, we did not meet again, so I'd move that A and B here be re-referred.
Is there a second on that?
Representative Wells is second.
Okay, the motion on the floor to re-refer and it's been seconded by Representative Ingram. Any discussion from members of the RTM?
Mr. Flanagan, this is Representative Henchel.
Yes. Go ahead, Representative.
I just wanted to note, I'm not sure it was mentioned on our last RTM meeting, but regarding the Code of Ethics, that was briefly discussed in a previous R and O meeting. And I believe Ted Els, who is the chairman of the current Board of Ethics, had agreed to take a look at the materials submitted, discuss it among the Board or the Commission, I'm not sure which it is, but discuss it and get back to the rules and ordinance with any comments that they may have regarding a need to expand or modify the current code.
Any other discussion from members of the RTM? Any discussion from members of the public?
I'm in, please.
Mr. Cook, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I sat here for the last, what, half hour? And I didn't say a word. Why? Because I didn't have anything to say. But now I do have something to say and I hope I can say it for about two minutes without somebody catcalling or interrupting or whatever. Because what I'm saying is very germane to this issue. It's right on the topic of the agenda. And I'm just, as a citizen of this town, yes, I would appreciate that much respect. Here's what I want to say. These two items, I would request, because they're my items, that they be referred to another committee. Why? Because Representative Black is not there. Not only is he not there, he's not honest. And I want to tell you why. Now, this is a comment and I have a right to say.
Flanagan here.
No, I have a right to say. I didn't tell anybody your name, but you said he's not honest. Why don't you hear me out? Why don't you hear me out?
That's the item on the agenda, please.
It is on the agenda. And here's what I want to tell you. I want to talk about the fairness of these petitions. And here's what I want to say. 10 years ago, my family, or I should say I, was in litigation against the previous administration. Some of the people on here will remember that. Okay, we were in federal court, okay, over the issue of particularly Connecticut 490, the farm tax. Okay, now here's where I'm going with this. The RTM not only was interested in the issue, even though we were in litigation, you even appointed a subcommittee to study it. Now, last meeting, because we were in litigation, Representative Black and Representative Ingram, his right-hand man, said, no, we're not going to hear this petition because it's in litigation.
Mr. Cook.
Now, here, no, you've got to hear me out. Hear me out, hear me out, hear me out, it's only fair.
Reeling to the Code of Ethics, the item on the call.
Talking about the fairness of petitions and why I want this item, we referred but to another committee. Because the committee it sits on is not fair. Black is not fair and his right-hand man Ingram is not fair. And you saw that happen last meeting. Now, why was my Costco petition taken off the call? Because we were in litigation, but the last time we were in litigation, not only wasn't it taken off the call, but you actually formed a subcommittee to study it. Now, what's that all about? If you can answer that for me, Mr. Moderator, then I'll shut up. But I think there's a real hypocrisy going on here. And I think the reason is, quite frankly, because you don't want to hear it. Why don't you want to hear it? Because you know that I will lay out in spade the dis- the dishonesty and the corruption in this town.
All right. Representative Flanagan here.
I'm muted.
Okay, if you're talking about the Code of Ethics, Mr. Cook, please say on the subject here.
Well, I'm talking about the petition process. You understand me? Okay?
And you. I'm, Mr. Cook, I'm talking about the item on the agenda.
I am too. In this case, I am too. I'm talking about this item, and I don't want it being heard by Black and his committee and Ingraham because they're dishonest in the.
Well, all right, here we go. See, and Mr. Cook, uh, this, this is becoming insulting remarks, okay? I am not going to change the committee process. It's in the R and O, okay? Motion on the floor is to re-refer the item.
Okay, if I call somebody dishonest.
Representative Flanagan here.
I'd like this re-referred to another committee.
Um, Rep, Rep, Representative Flanagan here.
It does go on there. Will, will Ingraham, will, will he quit muting me, or whoever's muting me? You know?
But to answer your question, remember, this is Representative Flanagan, uh, Mr. Cook. Uh, it's in the R and O Committee, and I'm not changing that, okay?
Why won't you change it? You saw that not fair. You said.
To make a decision on that. It's in the real ordinance committee, and I will stand by my ruling on that. It's going to.
One that refers them to committee. You refer them to committee.
I refer them to committee, Mr. Cook, and it's staying with rules and ordinance. End of discussion.
You sent it to a dishonest committee. I just showed you how they're dishonest.
That's it. Any other people wishing to speak to this item?
Mr. Moderator, you have Mr. Petrowski has his hand up.
Uh, Mr. Petrowski, go ahead.
I just have a, a quick question. Um, we had recently had another petition, and this is why I bring this up, uh, about the Parkside Incident. And I was just curious if maybe you guys could, again, maybe put a little fire to get it into the Board of Selectmen meeting. We had two weeks after you guys referred it over there, and it didn't make the agenda. This meeting was canceled. I'm just saying, I don't know how we could get it on there.
Well, unfort- unfortunately, Mr. Petrowski, we're dealing with the item on the, on the agenda. If you're talking of anything pertaining to the Code of Ethics, that's the only thing you can speak to?
Uh, okay, I, I, I just figured it was petitions, maybe I could just throw it out there because it seems to be just getting ignored. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else from the public wishing to speak to this item?
Speak again, please. I'm speaking directly.
Please, add him on here.
Directly to the Code of Eth-, okay? Here's what I'm saying. I would like the Code of Ethics petition, or in this case, it's a letter, to be referred to another committee because Black and Ingraham are not honest. They're running their committee dishonestly, okay? Could I be any more explicit? Can I give you another example? I mean, what? The first example I gave you was inadequate?
Representative Flanagan, I hear you, Mr. Cook, but I'm not changing the committee assignment on what it is.
I'd like to have, I like.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
To have one person is our.
This is Representative Wells. I'd like to speak to the situation.
Representative, go ahead.
It, it's already in process in R and O. It's being reviewed by the Ethics Chairman. Let's let it run its course, and if nothing happens, then we can bring it up for another committee if you need to, Mr. Cook. But let's let it run its course on this one. R and O hasn't met. We haven't done anything negative towards it, and they have nothing positive towards it. It's just got to run its course. Thank you.
Then Flanagan. Wait a minute, Mr. Cook, on this, anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this? Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this?
Chris, you have to unmute yourself.
Who wishes to speak to this?
Well, Chris was waving his hands.
Representative Sullivan, are you uh?
He was, no, he was typing.
I was typing. I'm sorry.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to this? Uh, this is.
One last comment, please.
One last comment, Mr. Cook, that's it.
You know, here's the deal. I'll go along with what Representative Wells said. Fair enough. But I hope everyone here remembers that I personally am on record when this thing gets kicked back, and they're going to say, well, he's in litigation again on this issue, so we're not going to hear. I just want to just go on record that I said these things, and I want to say one more thing. If one member of this RTM can step up and say where my logic and my example isn't accurate, I'd like to hear. I really would like to hear. Because if you don't say that, then I just consider the fact that I am right.
Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to re-refer. Are there any no votes? Are there any no votes? Are there any abstentions? The item is re-referred. Representative Black, did you, did you uh, also make a, a, a motion on the examination of the P O C D, or, or do you want to make a motion on that also? I can't remember what you did on that.
Correct. I, I, the motion was to re-refer both of them since we hadn't met. Um, just for a point of information, the uh, Chairman Els was at our committee last month, um, but they did not meet. I know he was hospitalized in the meantime, so uh, they were to review some suggestions from uh, another town, Belmont, um, and see if we wanted to expand our Code of Ethics um, and come back to us, but they haven't reported back. Uh, because they haven't met, and uh, the examination of the P O C D process, we did not get to. So that motion was for both those letters. Thank you.
Okay, so, so for clarification, uh, the, the motion for re-referral has been approved for both of those items. Moving on to Administrative Services, petition to consider the possibility of health, public health hazards emanating from the, the demolishing debris piles at the former Atlantic Wire site. Representative Alphon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, this was discussed at length over the last two RT, uh, Admin Services Committee meetings, with much of the discussion focusing on the contamination of the dust from the debris piles uh, on that site. As a result, the First Selectmen spoke to the property owners and expressed uh, the citizens' concerns to them. At the following committee meeting, the First Selectmen reported back to the committee that the property owner had agreed to hydroseed the piles in an attempt to prevent dust uh, migration from the site. Discussion on environmental concerns were brought up as far as the hydroseeding, but ultimately, a motion was made by Representative Everson to request that the property owner cover the debris piles rather than hydroseeding and to ask permission from proper oversight agencies before hydroseeding. Uh, this was approved unanimously in committee, and I put that forward to the full RTM.
Motion on the floor from Representative Alphon, is there any discussion from uh, RTM members?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Everson.
Representative Everson, go ahead.
Um, uh, as Representative Alphon just reported, we had made this motion. Uh, it's my understanding that the hydroseeding went ahead at Atlantic Wire. And if I could through you, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask the First Selectmen to please report back to us what kind of discussion went on with the property owner, and if he did discuss that, or whose determination it was for the hydroseeding to occur at Atlantic Wire after we spent um, at least forty-five minutes to an hour discussing this item. And uh, this was a unanimous decision by the Administrative Services Committee.
Hey, Representative Flanagan here, uh, Representative Cosgrove, any comment on that? I mean, Selectman Cosgrove?
Yeah, Selectman Cosgrove here. Yes, so uh, to Representative Everson's question, I had not had a conversation with the owner uh, between the meeting and prior to what I've learned that they did uh, 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 hydroseed the piles. Um, and as I mentioned, I believe to the committee uh, at the last meeting regarding my discussion with the, one of the owners, that that was um, not a recommendation at the time by the town that was presented to them. That was a, a decision that the property owners had decided to uh, try in an attempt to uh, put at ease concerns of uh, if there was in fact any dust.
Representative Flanagan, thank you, Selectman Cosgrove. Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak?
Uh, yes, Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the First Selectmen. Um, I'm curious as to whether or not um, Mr. Cosgrove, you were aware that the hydroseeding, about the hydroseeding before the fact or after the fact um, that it had occurred. I was, I must admit that I, as I think other members of the Admin Services Committee, was surprised to hear um, that that had taken place after the fact, after the discussion um, that we spent a considerable amount of time on expressing our concerns um, that members of the public had chimed in, and uh, we expressed um, some concerns about that process. I do understand the constraints of the property owner and the jurisdiction or the lack thereof for the town, but I'm just curious as to when it came to the town's attention, specifically the First Selectmen's attention, that the hydroseeding had in fact occurred.
Representative Flanagan here, Selectman Cosgrove, any comment on that?
I, I was made aware probably right after the fact, probably uh, the day or two after it happened. I think it was the following day. Just by comment.
Any other members of the RTM wishing to speak to this?
Uh, this is Representative Everson again, um, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say um, that I've learned that this matter has gotten the attention of the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection. So I'm hoping that there will be um, some further developments uh, in the near future. And once I learn what those are, certainly we'll share that with uh, other members, especially of Admin Services. Thank you.
Hey, Representative Flanagan, thank you. Uh, any other members wishing to speak to this from the RTM?
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'm a little unclear. Is, is the motion to request that the piles be covered? I wasn't clear whether it was an either or with the hydroseeding, or just, you know, the motion is that the owner be requested to cover the piles. Whether or not we have the authority to make them do that is another matter. But could you clarify that what the motion is?
Representative Flanagan here, Representative Alphon, will you please re-clarify the motion, please?
Yes, just for um, a little clarification. Initially, uh, the night we voted on this motion, um, the committee had learned that the property owner um, intended to hydroseed. So the motion was to request that they cover the debris piles. Or if they proceed with hydroseeding, that they would uh, get proper permission from the uh, correct oversight agencies. Um, so it was more a recommendation to the property owner. I can read the full motion again if you'd like. It was uh, to request that the property owner cover the debris piles rather than hydroseeding and to ask permission from proper oversight agencies before hydroseeding. And that was the motion how it came out of committee.
Mr. Moderator.
Representative Ingraham, go ahead.
Representative Ingraham, just to uh, um, point of information or clarification on how our processes work. Um, you know, when items go to the committee, the committee refers and um, recommends to the RTM to approve an item. So while that's the, those are the recommendations that came to us. Um, you know, the ratification of having anything moved or sent to the First Selectmen's Office or anywhere else wouldn't happen until after this meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Representative Edelman again.
Go ahead, Representative Edelman.
Um, I'm just curious what, from either my colleague, Representative Everson, or the First Selectmen, if we know the chronology of when after our admin meeting that hydroseeding had taken place.
Representative Flanagan here, uh, uh, Selectman Cosgrove, any comment on that?
Uh, I, I believe I was made aware, I want to say it was uh, last, last, end of last week sometime. I don't have the specific day. I mean, it seems like others on this call were aware that it was done, so maybe somebody know, saw when it was occurring or not.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak on this?
Moderator Flanagan, this is Representative Leach.
Uh, Representative Leach.
I just want to ask Representative Alphon through you if he wouldn't mind writing that motion in the chat room for me.
Representative Flanagan, Representative Alphon?
This is Representative Alphon, not a problem.
Okay.
Um, Representative, Representative Flan, uh, Moderator Flanagan, this is Director Alex Paluzzi.
All right, wait a minute, I just, uh, I need to make sure everybody from the RTM uh, has.
Sorry, yep.
Mr. Moderator. Representative. Uh, this is Representative Solomon. I just have a question. Um, and I wasn't at the Admin Services meeting, but was the property owner in attendance at that committee meeting? And obviously it would depend on if they knew about the motion coming out of committee.
Representative Flanagan, Representative Alphon, can you answer that question?
Yes, Representative Alphon, uh, no, the property owner was not at the meeting.
Okay, anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak to this?
Representative Edelman again.
Representative Edelman.
I, I, I think that the, that we were aware that the property owner wasn't at the meeting, and I think that is why we had sought the intervention of the First Selectmen to speak to the property owner prior to the hydroseeding. If I'm incorrect, I apologize, but that was my understanding of the scenario of events.
Hey. This is Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm just curious and maybe what, I'm wondering whether we should modify um, this, this recommendation, because since the hydroseeding has already taken place, it seems like a moot point that we request that they get, you know, a proper review by DEEP, um, because they've already done it. I would observe that from what I've seen of those piles, at least from the south side, they're entirely brick rubble, and there's no way that you could really effectively hydroseed it anyway. And whether we should modify this, this motion just to make a request that the owner cover the piles. And I put that up for discussion.
Uh, Representative Flanagan here, correct me, Representative Alphon, wasn't that the part of your motion that they either cover or, or, or hydroseed?
This is Representative Alphon, correct. Uh, the first portion of, of the motion was to request that they cover rather than hydroseed. Um, but obviously the hydroseeding has taken place before tonight's meeting.
But it also was requesting that it get reviewed before they hydroseed. I thought that that was part of that, that motion, that it be reviewed environmentally before they go ahead and hydroseed.
This is Representative Alphon, yes, that is part of the motion. Or part of the request of the motion.
So I presume that hasn't been done, and that therefore that, that, that part of our request becomes in a way moot.
Representative Flanagan here, so I believe Representative Henshaw, it's a moot point at this point.
Uh, this is Representative Everson. Yeah, if I could speak to that. Um, the, the whole issue here was the request that came in from the citizens' petition for Mr. Costanza was to cover the pile. And at our Administrative Services Committee meeting, the First Selectmen said that now the property owner, he told us, wanted to hydroseed. So that was the first any of us had heard of the hydroseeding being done. And there are legitimate uh, environmental concerns. Hydroseeding includes fertilizer. The status of that site and whatever is there, the Branford River is nearby. And we had requested that if the hydroseeding was going to be done, that the proper authorities be notified and in agreement that this was the proper course. While also, we recognize this is private property. Um, it's also a matter that is under review by state environmental and state health uh, official. And so while the point may be moot, the property owner went ahead, which is um, unfortunate. Uh, and the, you know, the communication I thought would have gone to the property owner much sooner, but obviously this was a done deal. Um, and uh, it's uh, disappointing that uh, as elected officials, we discussed this at length. Um, and had a meaningful discussion at length. And as a result, we gave a request to the first selectman to go back to the property owner. And that didn't happen, obviously, from what the first selectman has told us. And the property owner went ahead and did it. So to me, it is, um, you know, if we're going to respect the process here, what we discussed and the process uh, fell on deaf ears. Um, so that's a real disappointment and I, I wanted that to be included in this meeting, that I was on the record for that. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
I have a question.
Representative Wells, go ahead.
A quick question for Representative Everson through you, Mr. Moderator. Are you suggesting that the committee passing the recommendation should have gone directly to the owner without coming through the RTM? Cause I believe the process is very clear that the full RTM needs to vote on that. As of right now, the RTM hasn't made a recommendation one way or the other. So what would we have notified the owner about?
Uh, Representative Wells, um, the owner, whether or not he was notified of what the committee discussion was, the committee discussion could have been communicated to the property owner, certainly. And that the, the RTM would need to have approved the committee motion. Now, obviously the property owner went ahead and did the hydro seeding one way or another. So what we did in committee, what this RTM is doing right now is a moot point. So why did we bother even discussing it and trying to have a meaningful discussion on a citizen's petition and on a property that has environmental concerns when what was the point? That's my point.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, yes.
I'd like to, uh, make an amendment before we vote on this. Make an amendment and vote on a recommendation that the RTM request that the piles be covered. Understanding that we don't necessarily have any authority to enforce that, but if we're going to make a a statement, I think the statement should be that the request is to have the piles covered, period.
I'll second that, Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Brockett.
Motion on the floor by Representative Henshaw, second by Representative Brockett to have the piles covered. Uh, any discussion from, uh, members of the RTM?
Representative Adelman. I think we should, thank you, Mr. Moderator, I think we should include something, uh, whereby the property owner is put on notice by the RTM of the RTM's motion, if it's so, and, and if it's so granted that it had been granted.
Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak to this item?
Representative Leach, sorry, um, so.
Leach.
Things about the motion, is, is this an amendment to the original motion, um?
Uh, Representative Leach, this is Representative Flanagan, I, yes, it is, first, it was made by Representative Hen- Henshaw to, um, make an amendment to the motion.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham, go ahead.
As I, I read, as I read the item in the chat, that's exactly what it, it says. The only thing that's being taken out says rather than hydro seeding. That was the, the motion coming through was the property owner cover the debris piles rather than hydro seeding. And ask permission from the proper oversight agencies before hydro seeding, I guess, removing that is removing the, uh, the second half about asking permission. That's really the only effect is that.
Yeah, I'm moving that we, we remove that and just make a, a request that the piles be covered.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from members of the RTM?
Yeah, there's, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah. There's a question I have, Mr. Moderator.
Representative.
Representative Tohill.
Go ahead.
I mean, as far as covering it, you know, that's, I mean, the thing I'm saying is if you're gonna ask it to be covered, you know, personally, the thing I think it should do is to make it more specific, you know, it should be covered, you know, like how? Because, you know, they could say, well, it's already been covered. It's been covered with, you know, the, the grass seed and, you know, so. I mean, how do you want it covered? What's the material that you want to use? Thank you.
Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, Representative Black.
Representative Black, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'm just curious, um, I don't have any expertise in this area and if, if DEEP is already involved, my inclination is to defer to their recommendation, um, not to make any recommendation of my own. Uh, so I, I'm interested in any response to that, that, uh, Representative End, uh, Everson or anyone else might have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Representative Brockett, I can partially answer the Representative Black's question.
Go ahead, Representative Brockett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, through you to Representative Black and, and the others. Um, this is an issue that's been ongoing for, uh, more than a year. Um, back in October of 2019, an RTM member brought this up and the first selectman gave us a briefing at an RTM meeting. Uh, subsequently, there was a correspondence that came out of a state agency, the Environmental Department of the State, that said that there could be an issue, uh, with respect to the dust blowing off of the piles to the citizens and they referred to it as fugitive dust. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, received that letter. Um, I, I penned a letter to the first selectman and asked that the piles be covered. Um, shortly after that, a petition was filed asking the piles to be covered. Uh, that petition was filed in March. My letter was dated in February. It's all based on correspondence that was issued by an individual at the state named Meg Harvey back in November of 2019. Um, so I think that, uh, uh, as far as covering the piles, we should leave that how they get covered up to the, the the owner and, and he can speak to DEEP, but I think that, uh, um, I support the amendment to the motion by Peter Henshaw that the, the, we should request the property owner to cover those piles. Thank you, uh, Mr.
Okay, anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak? Mary Nun, is there anybody from, from the public wishing to speak?
Yeah, you, Representative Flanagan, you have, uh, Brian Nichols, Bobby Costanzo, Doc Petrowski and Winko.
Oh, okay, so let's see, uh, let's go with, uh, Representative Petrowski.
Thank you. Um, one thing I'd like to say is, and, and Representative Everson is right in this whole matter, there was a full-blown discussion. I'm sure most of you guys were there. And the hydro seeding was very concerns of all the RTM members about fertilizer in the water. How are you gonna grow grass seed on brick? I mean, I, I mean, let's be realistic. We're asking just to get the things covered nice and easy and, and do some testing and that's all that happened. And nothing happened there. And we're back in the same flow of it got hydro seeded. Now we could even have a more potential problem is most people, uh, commented to of the, um, you know, fertilizer running to the river. And I think that should be addressed because these RTM members, especially, and I'll, I'll give a lot of credit to Representative Everson, Representative Adelman, who, and, and especially Representative Tohill, took the time to look into this, to come up with a conclusion to say, hey, let's, let's hit this head on. And then they just got blindsided. And nothing was done in their favor. It was in like they said, and I'll say it was a waste of time and it, it, you know, whatever they hydro seeded anyway, without any, you know, they asked for, well, could we do organic fertilizer? We don't know if that happened or not. And now we may have a bigger problem over there. And I just, you know, and, and I'm sorry that this happened to these representatives, but maybe now you kind of realize what the citizens go through when things fall on deaf ears. And I just hope maybe we could come to a conclusion here to maybe get it tested and see if there's nothing there. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nichols, I believe is, uh, waiting to speak on this item? Mr. Nichols? During that one? Yes, identify yourself, please. Go ahead.
Uh, Brian Nichols.
Go ahead.
So my interest basically in, i- in this whole matter is basically we come down to this. We're here now and we've known those piles have been there for how long? Years. Yet they're not covered. But then we spray. I mean, if you take grass seed and put it on, on a cinder block, is it gonna grow? And that's, that's a question to you, Mr. Moderator. If I put grass seed on a cinder block, or you do, will it grow? It's a question to you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, Representative Flanagan, I doubt it very much.
Okay, so then basically, we're trying to make high tide and, and it's not gonna happen. So why would we as a town jeopardize our own children? And/or our, our people that live here? And say, no, it's fine, it's good. I, I'm, I'm very confused in, in everybody's point of what they're taking on this. Because you have ball fields over there where kids are playing baseball. You have houses over there that people live in. We should take this very seriously. That's contaminated ground. I'm not saying it is or not. But obviously, if you got 26 contaminants, you probably got contaminated ground. I'm not, listen, and I'm no one to say whether it is or it isn't, but in all reality, come on. So does the town want to take that liability on? Because they should at this point. Because basically you failed the people that you're representing. And the people you're representing are the people of this town. And those piles, no matter what, dirty dirt gets covered. Bottom line, it, it can't even be transported over the highway without being covered. The whole tub being lined. I don't understand where everyone's coming at with all of this. You, you, you gotta understand, there's liability there and the liability at this point is on this town. God forbid a kid winds up with cancer because of this. You want that on your, you really want that on your chest? Cause I would never want that on my chest. I'm sorry.
Okay, Representative Flanagan.
Can I speak? Can I speak, please?
Just a minute. Was there, uh, Mr. Costanzo? See, was that the other, would you speak to that? Go red. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to speak to that. Um, I'm the, the, uh, person that put forward the petition and the, uh, Administrative Services Committee worked very hard on this. So it was a big disappointment when I drove by the property last Wednesday and they started to hydro seed and I think they finished it up on last Thursday. Um, um, maybe that they had it in their head, they were gonna hydro seed and that's the way they were gonna handle it. Uh, they didn't want to cover it. But I, I hope we go forward with the, uh, covering, uh, taking a vote on, uh, making a recommendation to them to cover it. Uh, we've been waiting for three years for something to happen with that. I understand it's, it's bogged down with litigation, but three years is a long time. So litigation is scheduled to go, I think, uh, trial date is sometime in July of 2021. We don't want to wait until that point and it might get pushed out further than that. If this was an easy problem that could be resolved, um, with, by throwing money at it, both the developer and the owner of the property, they have the money. It, it would be solved right now. They don't, nobody wants to wait around to, to have their project delayed if it could be easily solved. And the owner doesn't want to hold on to a piece of property and have, um, that he wants to sell if it could have been easily resolved. So I don't believe that just covering the piles is the solution. It's what I asked for for now as a Band-Aid to cover the seven piles that are on that pro- property for three years. And people talk about, you know, will, will, will grass seed or hydro seed grow on, uh, a cinder block, a brick? It's not gonna grow on those piles. There's seven piles there. They're not just pieces of brick and they're just not pieces of cinder block. There's different components in those different, those seven different piles. So I would imagine if it was summertime and you hydro seeded, some of those piles are gonna sprout and they're gonna be covered with hydro seed. Probably not the hi- the, the best way to do it. I'm not an expert on it, but you go over there tomorrow after, uh, well, if you go over there after the snowstorm, you're gonna see runoff and you're gonna see that it was eroded. Uh, and it's, it was done in December. Um, it's like putting a skating rink in your backyard, filling it up uh, with water in July and then hoping it's gonna freeze overnight. It's, it's not gonna grow overnight. It, it made, uh, the whole process was probably just a waste of money, in my opinion. Uh, the proper way over there, uh, and, and what the petition was about was not about covering, it was about testing the debris piles to find out what's in it. Because we still don't have anything that was made to the public. I know there's some new information coming out in a few months from what the first selectman said at the meeting. So that's encouraging, but we waited three years already. We know that they're already in violation of some, um, not turning into proper paperwork that was issued in 2011. Here we are in 2020, we still don't have the answers of what's in those piles. There was testing done pre-demolition. We don't have any argument with that. There was bore tests taken before, um, in the ground back in 2016. We understand that. They found many things that are poisonous and toxic. The point is, after the building was knocked down and those piles were, uh, bulldozed over to that corner of the property, those seven piles, we don't know what's in those seven piles. To say that we do know because we did a pre-demolition test and that's the same stuff that was in the building, that material became unencapsulated. And during demolition, that's just the process demolition, and then it was crushed and pulverized and then moved over into the seven piles. Now we have a bigger problem. So the Band-Aid for right now would be not to hydro seed it, especially not in December, but to cover it. So I hope that we could go ahead with a simple request and if the owners of the property don't think that's the proper way or they don't have the, um, uh, the resources to do that properly, uh, then I know we're gonna have some, uh, input from the state and maybe federal government, which would be very helpful. And, um, although it's, uh, a vote before the entire RTM tonight, um, Mr. Chairman Alphon and the committee agreed that we'll keep this alive, not at every meeting. It can't bog down their meeting every month or, uh, every two weeks. But we're gonna keep them in, uh, conversation with this and keep this alive. So I hope that's what happens here. Thank you.
Okay, Representative Flanagan, uh, Mr. Cook, did you have a comment on this?
I did, actually. Um, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Couple things, you know, they, they sort of general sense that I don't think the RTM does what they're, that, that, they don't do what they're supposed to. But the Administrative Services, Representative Everson took exception to that. And in her case, I think exception should be taken because she did go above and beyond what, uh, I've seen any other representative do pretty much on any other issue other than what you have. So that said, you know, I think Mr. Costanzo articulated the whole thing extremely well. But I would like to put out there this simple kind of connect the dots thing. These piles have sat out there for three years. It wasn't an RTM rep that brought it forward, Representative Brockett. It was me, based upon the recommendation of Mr. Petrowski. And he said, what's going on with those piles? I contacted Representative Trow at the time. She brought it forward. I sent the letter. First selectman got up there, gave you all a song and dance, which he's still doing to this day. So that's how it happened. Three years later, the petition goes, you know, to some sort of, you know, focal point. And the first selectman shows up and says, yeah, they're thinking about hydro seed. Three years and the exact time that this committee is talking about these piles, they're talking about hydro seed. Then the committee says, Then the committee says, and I remember what the committee said, they didn't want hydroseed. You wanted to cover it, but it was real concerned about hydroseed. That was not even on the table as far as I remember. Testing was also on the table. It was up to the first selectman to go to them and come back. And I thought he was gonna report tonight and say, here's what they said. In the meantime, everybody starts hydroseeding brick in the middle of December. I mean, what the, you know? Come on, how stupid do you think we are? So what I'm saying is, I'm not saying it happened like this. But the first selectman gets on the phone with O'Neal over there and says, you know, the RTM is raising its heels. Just throw some seed on there, let's be done with it. That'll shut them up. Now, did that happen? I don't know. I wasn't in the room. But as far as process goes, Representative Beverson, welcome to my world for the last twelve years. That's how this town runs. You got a little snippet of how this town runs. And I've been trying to tell this town for the last twelve years, in addition to other citizens, what's going on here. We fought through one administration, which was dishonest as they come. This other, this second one took 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 its place and then they become the same thing. So good luck with the process because it doesn't exist. Is what the first selectman wants and he lies his way through it and you guys just sit there and say?
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Moving on, uh, anybody else?
When I say that, do I get muted? What, I can't say the first selectman lies? He does lie. He lies all the time.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Rickio. Can I speak for a moment?
No, you can't. I have the floor. I have the floor.
I want to see if anybody other members of the public would like to.
I have the floor. Do I not have the floor?
Let's conclude this, Wayne, Mr. Cook. Let's go.
You know, when I say the first selectman lies, now all of a sudden I get muted. All right?
One first B.
Huh? You know?
You can speak to the issue. I have no problem with that, Mr. Cook. No, we won't, we won't tolerate insulting members of the, uh,
Not insulting, that's stating a fact. He lied. He lies and he lies and he lied. What do you want me to say? Keep honest? He's not honest. He's not honest at all. You know, if he's so honest, where's the investigation with Costco? You know, we wait.
All right, here we go. That's.
Mr. Moderator.
And, all right, Mr.?
Part of the same thing. Don't you understand? It's all part of the same thing, whether it's the piles over Atlantic Wharf or Medlin's
Can I speak?
Parkside Village. No, you, quiet, Mark. Just be quiet and listen to me. It's all part of the same thing.
We heard it a thousand times.
There's a pattern of dishonesty.
Mr. Cook, that's enough, okay? Moving on, uh, Mr. Rickell? Go ahead.
I I'm trying to understand.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Rickell. Come on.
Why would you interrupt me?
Mr. Rickell, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So from what I understand.
Corrupted me.
From what I understand, first of all, I don't know anyone on this call right now if they are an expert in this field. I certainly am not. Mr. Free is not. Mr. Flanagan is not. Um, Mr. Alphon is not. From what I understand, the property had been tested by East Shore Health and DEP. Can someone tell me what the results were of those tests? Does anybody know? I I just want to understand. What were the results of this test?
Representative Flanagan here, anybody can answer that question, uh?
Chairman, Chairman Flanagan, this is Representative Conklin.
Representative Conklin, go ahead.
Yeah, and again, I realize I'm gonna be accused of not doing a very, very thorough job. Uh, but I, along with Representative Trow, in actually, it started late twenty eighteen. Um, made inquiries to the East Shore Health and made inquiries to DEP. And we received reports from East Shore Health that there were no health issues coming from that debris field. I'm not an expert. I have to rely on those I trust and East Shore Health I trust. I also trusted DEP when they said there are no, there's no health issues coming from that debris field. And that was from a report uh, from October of two thousand nineteen. In addition, I have a report dated December of two thousand seventeen from Environmental Partners who studied the debris piles and also concluded, though it's it's all technical reports, so I have no idea how to read them, but concluded that there were no health issues in those debris fields. And I'm I'm only trusting those who have the expertise. I don't know it, but this was two to three years ago. And now you're going to be asking DEP and East Shore Health and whoever else to do those studies again, which is fine, but, uh, I I am pretty sure that I would trust there's nothing in those, no health issues in those debris fields. Not saying that if there is dust that migrates from the fields, that that's not an issue all in of itself.
So.
Anyway, so that's what I know.
So, okay, uh, thank you, Representative Conklin. So we have three different bodies, three different organizations, East Shore Health, DEP and Environmental Partners have both, have all three of them have concluded there's no health issue. Okay. If if they came to us and told us that, I don't know. If they showed me results, they showed me tests, I don't know if if they're lying or not. I don't know. And most of the people on this call would probably agree with me. They don't know. So we're relying on three different organizations to provide expertise of opinion. So now we have a situation where it's being brought up to this body. And it sounds like we're gonna go back to the DEP and ask them to do another test. Is that the way I understand this? Can someone answer that question, please?
Representative Flanagan here, Representative Rickio, the motion from Representative Hennessy is to recommend covering.
I I I, listen, I I don't care what the recommendation is. I just want to know, what is the next step?
Listen, Mr. Moderator, can I make a few comments? Because it may help clarify some of this.
Please.
Now, as stated several times, this has been a topic of discussion for a few years now, uh, at least two, if not maybe longer. And the one thing, uh, I want to point out is that the information over the the last two to three years that this has come before this body has been consistent. As Mr., as Representative Conklin just pointed out, when Representative Conklin and Representative Trow looked into it, when I had prior, looked into it prior to them, the same information. There was round of testing and as Mr. Costanzo stated, uh, prior to demolition, they identified the, what needed to be abated. They, but prior to demolition, you need to submit a demolition plan. Yeah, you have to follow that. That's a monitored process to take down the bill, first abate the building, the the actual structure that's gonna be down, taken down, remove those materials, which there was asbestos and some other materials, I believe, that were removed. Then the building was taken down and then put into those piles that you see there today. After that process is done, they do a post demolition. I believe that is what Mr. Costanzo's referring to. Is that, okay, they did the pre-demolition, we identify, we're not, we don't have concerns, we that, you know, what was with those test results? Because as you aptly point out, there, Mr. Rickio and Mr. Representative Conklin and others, this body is not the body of experts that review it. We base our decisions on the professionals, uh, which in this case included DEP, I believe, comments from DPH, um, East Shore Health Department, as well as the the, uh, Branford, uh, um, Building Department to ensure that, you know, proper permits were filed with the demolition plan. And the environmental professional that oversaw the the demolition of this building. We rely on them. They've always, they stated that the material that was taken down and crushed when tested prior to demolition did not pose a health risk and therefore could be stockpiled on the site, didn't require to be covered because of what the material is. Mr. Costanzo raised a concern, okay. Did the contents of that, what was actually crushed, change in any way? Was there stuff in there that perhaps wasn't able to be tested prior to demolition? And Mr. Costanzo could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what I heard him say. We have to see what about the post demolition survey? And that is, from my understanding, forthcoming. It's been a couple of years, uh, since it's been down. Talk with the the owner, when I spoke to him and, you know, that's, Mr. Cook, uh, didn't participate in those calls, so that's not how the conversation went at all. It always states, you know, as with some kind of authority. Uh, the, um, and that was expected to become that that post demolition would be coming, uh, in in a month or two is how it was raised to me. So now, as far as the covering of the piles, one of the letters referenced, I think it was from DEP, saying that there's, you know, a- at this point, there's nothing, you know, it's, it's for us to, uh, have authority over, at this point, there's no more activity occurring once the activity. And I believe it was referenced, however, as fugitive dust is something, and fugitive dust as is a technical term, uh, used to describe, you know, the the dust that may be suspended in air and then drifts off of the site. And, you know, that potentially primarily takes place during the demolition, during the crushing process. They have to suppress that dust through means. And there was concern, well, what if there is dust? Fugitive dust coming off to the the piles? And you you know, that would need to be addressed. So therefore, the discussion took place was, okay, we acknowledged, the petitioner stated, he acknowledged he didn't have concerns with the reports that were provided for pre-demolition. However, he wanted to see post-demolition testing. And in the interim, if there was a concern, because there's unknown was to encourage them to take a a measure to cover so the pile, so it doesn't create, um, in case there is circumstance where there is fugitive dust. That's my understanding. Okay? So that's where we are now. Uh, more testing is required. It is with, as Representative Everson stated, and has been stated for uh, not months, but probably years, is that the professional organizations are involved and oversee this. Okay? And then one other comment, if I could, as far as the process that was stated before that was not followed. And I, Representative, uh, Ingraham touched on it or addressed it, just a follow up. There was a lengthy discussion at the Admin Services, just as there being a lengthy discussion tonight. And the committees provide a recommendation to the RTM and the RTM is the body that votes on the action. Now, there's been, there's members on this RTM who've been involved a lot longer than I have. And I'm sure we've all seen where there's been recommendations come out of committee that has changed when it gets to the full body of the RTM. So this is following a process for this body. Thank you.
So so, uh, uh, so, Mr. Moderator, and, you know, just just for clarification, I'm trying to understand a step. So we, there was, there was a test done in two thousand seventeen. There was a test done in two thousand eighteen by two different bodies. Now we're at the post-demolition stage. And we are uh, tonight, you know, what what is our objective tonight? Is our objective tonight to make another recommendation that they are, these piles are physically covered? And because I I attended a meeting and I think Mr. Costanza was at that meeting. And Mr. Costanza, I don't know what your background is. I don't know what your field of expertise is. But I remember you, I think it was you talking. You can come to us tonight and you can be providing your quote unquote expertise. I don't know. I don't know if you're right. I don't know if you're wrong. But the the, I think the department, I would really trust the independent body would be the DEP. Let let's bring the DEP in. Let's have them make a, 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 a recommendation of, you know, what what should be taking place? Is that? It it appears that's going to take place regarding the post demolition? I- is that a correct statement? That the DEP is gonna come back in and make another recommendation about this quote unquote fugitive dust?
Mr. Moderator, Representative Edelman, a point of order, there's a motion on the floor.
Right.
Isn't that what our discussion should be limited to at this point?
Mr. Edelman, I can't, I can't vote on something if I don't have all the all right. I'm just asking.
Maybe the the Representative Edelman, maybe the the motion should be read again. It seems pretty simple. I think it's to cover the make a recommendation that the piles get covered.
Well, Representative Flan, Representative Rick, the the motion on the floor that was from Representative Hennessy, an amendment to the committee report, is to have the, uh, pile covered, okay? That's, that's what we're dealing with. We're not, you know, let's not get into DEP and all this other stuff.
Here's the problem, and I wish Mr. Cook was here. We start hearing about all of these distractions, you lose, so here we are. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I work. And, you know, you you come to these meetings, you get so many different pieces and parts. You know, we're trying to make a decision here, but there's so many distractions that we don't know, I mean, I lose track of where the heck we are with this stuff. I, I mean, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know about, I don't know if everyone else feels the same way. All I know is we got three organizations made recommendations and they said it's it's safe. Wow, maybe it's not safe. So if it's not safe, how do we find out if it's not safe? And it sounds like that process is being, it it, that process is being undertaken. When Mr. Cook starts calling people liars and stuff, he turns me off. I just shut, I just shut my ears off.
Mr. Rickio, Representative Rickio, let's, let's.
And Mr. Petrowski, you can tell that to your buddy.
All right.
Because everything gets lost.
Listen, you're getting, you're getting out of order here now, Mr. Rickio. Let's let, let's stick with the amendment that's on the floor, okay?
Right, you do have, you have three persons that have their hands raised, just so you.
All right.
It's, uh, Mr. Costanzo, uh, Mr. Petrowski and Mr. Nichols.
Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Costanzo.
I think I said them in the right order.
Okay. Mr. Costanzo, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to just clear up a few things, uh, in all due respect to, uh, Representative Conklin and Representative Rickio. Um, my expertise is, I don't have expertise in environmental science or testing or any of that. All my knowledge is practical knowledge from working on, um, demolition of uh, older buildings for the state of Connecticut, mostly DOT, and refurbishing those buildings for further use. And, um, I've been around a lot of demolition and testing. Um, but I do want to point out, though, for, uh, I, I'm not an expert, but if you just follow the dates and the names of the test, it was pre-demolition test done. I agree to that and it was done thoroughly. And there was post-abatement test when the building was still standing. If you look at the date on the test, it's called post-abatement, not post-demolition. We are still waiting three years later for the post-demolition test. So no one really does know what's in those piles on the property. Those seven piles have not been tested. Two bricks were tested. Believe it or not, two bricks were tested post-demolition. Now, there must, there might be more testing that was done, but those results are not in. The only results we have so far on post-demolition are two bricks that were done by the East Shore Health. And we don't know what chain of custody was, what method they used to test those bricks. And, um, they said, it appears that there, there and they said, it appears that there appears not to be a health hazard. Well, that's not good enough for the people that live in this neighborhood, and the citizens of Branford. You can't say it appears not to be, when they really don't know. So it could also appear that there is something in there. So we're waiting for those post-demolition tests. In the meantime, we would like to see the piles covered, because we already waited over three years for that to happen, for those tests to come back. Thank you.
All right.
There's a motion on the floor, Representative Edelman.
Mr. Moderator.
I realize that, that I just want to be fair, just for one more time on here, we have two more gentlemen, and after that, we're going to vote on the amendment, okay? Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, no, I'd just like to say, I mean, there could be an easy end to this, show the results. Show the results, excuse me, I'm trying to turn the camera, show the results, and this could be put an end to, but nobody wants to show the results. Everyone says there's, you know, oh, we tested before, test it now, show the results, obviously you have citizens who have concerns. I don't know why it's such a big deal. You have RTM members that went far and beyond to do research into this, on both sides, Republican and Democrat. Why does that go, you know, not looked upon? And as far as, and I would just like to address this, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry if I'm out of line, but, you know, Mark Rickio, he's out of line, like, who are you to tell me who my friends are, and oh, Mr. Cook and this and that? You're out of line with that, and that's probably why you got beat by Robin Colby, because you're a loser.
That's exactly.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, my recommendation is, why don't we take Tom Petrowski off this call? I don't need to listen.
You're out of order, okay? One last individual going to speak.
Who do you have tonight, Tom?
I'd like to speak, please.
Mr. Nichols?
No, it's me.
Who's this?
Wayne Cook, I'm on the phone. Ingraham threw me off, Ingraham threw me off. What you afraid of, Ray? What you afraid of, Ray? Maybe people are telling the truth?
Ray, 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 throw him off again.
Yeah, throw him off again, you can't handle the truth.
You're such a loser, Mark.
You're getting out of here.
You can't handle the truth.
All right, all right. This is it, let's vote on the amendment on the floor.
Mr. Moderator.
I'd like to speak.
Representative Nichols, last person, go ahead.
I'm not a representative, my friend.
I'm sorry.
But thank you.
That's all right.
But in reality, I just look at it like, these kids are in jeopardy, we have to worry about the ball fields, we have to worry about the citizens also. So in my opinion, these piles have not been covered, and that's what we really need to focus on. I don't care what anybody else has to say, the bottom line is, they need to be covered. You go down to New Haven, where they have the salt piles, they're covered. Why are they covered? So it doesn't contaminate the water, it doesn't get into the water. There's a reason why they're all covered. It's dirty dirt, bottom line. It needs to be covered, and that's all.
All right, let's get back to the amendment on the floor, all right? Amendment on the floor from Representative Henchel, it's been second, and it is to make a recommendation that the piles be covered, okay? Is there any no votes? There any no votes?
No.
Representative Conklin is a no vote.
Representative Rickio is a no vote.
Representative Wells is a no vote.
We better do roll call, Moderator Flanagan.
Okay, Representative Lee, this looks like this will involve a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Point of procedure, please, first, this is Representative Toole.
Yeah, Representative again?
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to hear the full text of the motion again, please.
So what I have is Representative Henchel suggested an amendment to the committee report, he made a motion to ask the owner to cuss piles, the motion was seconded by Representative Brockett.
Okay, so that's the whole, all right.
That's the amendment.
That's the whole motion then?
Yes.
Okay, thank.
A yes vote is, yes, Representative Flanagan here, a yes vote is for the amendment, a no vote, you're against.
Okay, Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman, yes.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, no.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson, yeah.
Representative Austin.
Representative Austin, no.
Representative Black.
Representative Black, no.
Representative Brockett.
Representative Brockett votes yes.
Representative Conklin.
Representative Conklin votes no.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson, full-heartedly votes yes.
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Representative, sorry, Representative Greenberg.
She must have had to leave.
Okay. Representative Haken.
Representative Haken votes yes.
Representative Healy.
Representative Healy votes no.
Representative Henchel.
Representative Henchel votes yes.
Representative Hines.
Representative Hines votes no.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham votes no.
Representative Jackson.
Uh, Jackson votes yes.
Representative Lake votes yes. Representative Pre.
Representative Pre votes no.
Representative Rickio.
Representative Rickio votes no.
Representative Sember.
Representative Sember votes yes.
Representative Shresta.
Representative Shresta votes yes.
Representative Sires.
Sires, yes. Representative Sires, yes.
Representative Stupanic.
Representative Stupanic, yes.
Representative Sullivan.
Representative Sullivan finally voting yes.
Representative Turelli.
Representative Turelli votes yes.
Representative Toohill.
Representative Toohill votes yes.
And Representative Wells.
Representative Wells votes no.
No, okay.
I'd like to, Representative Greenberg just joined, this is Representative Wells.
Representative Greenberg, yes or no on that?
Sorry, guys, I lost service for a second. Representative Greenberg, yes.
Yes. So we have seventeen yes votes, and eleven no vote.
Representative, how many no votes?
Eleven.
Eleven. Okay, the amendment passes. Moving on to.
We have the main motion now.
Point of order, we have to vote on the amended motion.
That is correct, okay, now we have to vote on the main motion.
And you do have one hand from a constituent, Nancy.
I'll allow that, go ahead. Nancy Waskowski wishing to speak? I guess not. All right, so now we're voting on the main motion as amended?
Can you hear me now, Dennis?
Yes, I can hear you now, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I've been a taxpayer in town for many years, and I've lived here my whole life, and just by, I've been on a few, the last, well, quite a few of the RTM meetings, I want to commend most of the RTM members for their decorum and their professionalism, and I know it can be very, 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 a thousand varies difficult, but when you can't control yourself, you should just get up and walk away for a minute, just like a teacher would do in a schoolroom, or a CEO would do with a company. I found tonight's meeting to be very disappointing, and with the, with the behavior of some of the people, and that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're voting on the main motion as amended? We'll do a roll call vote on this also?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, could that please be repeated?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Alphon?
We're voting on the, sorry, Representative Alphon, we're voting on the original motion or the amended?
The amended, just Representative Green.
The amended.
Representative Henchel might be better, he made the amended motion, he might want to.
Okay.
He's got the clarification.
Representative Henchel?
Yeah, yes, this is Representative Henchel. The motion was that we, that the RTM vote to recommend to the owner that the pile, debris piles at Atlantic Wire be covered.
I thought that's what we already voted on.
We voted on making that the amendment.
We voted that on that. Vote on the main motion.
I was voting on that same motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Okay, so we might as well do a roll call vote on this also.
Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman, yes.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, yes.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson, yes.
Representative Austin.
Representative Austin, yes.
Representative Black.
Representative Black, no.
Representative Brockett.
Representative Brockett votes yes.
Representative Conklin.
Representative Conklin votes no.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Erlanger.
Representative Erlanger votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Haken.
Representative Haken, yes.
Representative Healy.
Representative Healy votes no.
Representative Henchel.
Representative Henchel votes yes.
Representative Hines.
Representative Hines votes no.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham votes no.
Representative Jackson.
Representative Jackson votes yes.
Representative Lake votes yes. Representative Pre.
Representative Pre votes no.
Representative Rickio.
Representative Rickio votes no.
Representative Sember.
Representative Sember votes yes.
Representative Shresta.
Representative Shresta votes yes.
Representative Sires.
Representative Sires, yes.
Representative Sumro, oh, sorry, she's absent. Representative Stupanic.
Representative Stupanic, yes.
Representative Sullivan.
Representative Sullivan voting yes.
Representative Turelli.
Representative Turelli votes yes.
Representative Toohill.
Yes, Representative Toohill votes yes.
And Representative Wells.
Representative Wells votes no.
Okay, we have eight nos, and nineteen yes.
I'm sorry.
Nineteen yes, eight nos.
Okay, motion passes.
Can I ask a point of information, Mr. Moderator? How will this vote be communicated to the property owner?
I would assume Representative Flanagan here, I may be wrong on that, the first selectman should communicate that to the property owner?
I ask just because, this is Representative Everson, because that wasn't a part of the, what we've just voted on, we made a recommendation that the piles be covered at Atlantic Wire, the former Atlantic Wire, but.
We made a request.
A request.
Representative Jackson, would it be possible for the RTM, or some member of the RTM, to write a letter to the owner, representing the RTM rather than the selectman doing it?
If the, this is Representative Wells, if something's being written on my behalf, I'd like to see it before it goes out, we should vote on that, not anything after the fact.
Point of order, Representative Flanagan, we've already voted on this, and again, with a special beating, I don't know, but if we can add something to be, to go along.
No, we can't.
It's, I mean, it's part of the record, I mean, any, any RTM member can call anybody up in town and say, hey, the RTM said something, if you wanted to make sure that they got it. It's not a, we're not, we're not locked down by the whole meeting, but, you know, it was action done by the RTM.
Okay. All right, moving on to the last item, the petition and examination of the role of the town of Branford in the removal of a nurse berm by the Branford Land Trust at Jarvis Creek and the potential safety hazards from the resulting flooding of Route 146, Representative Alphon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was heard in the Admin Services Committee over the last three months, and I'm just going to abbreviate quickly so that we don't have to rehash the entire hours of discussion that took place over those three meetings. Much of the discussion was centered around the flooding of Route 146. Conveniently, the Council of Regional Governments funded a study that, and held a meeting in November about the flooding of 146, with the intent of submitting recommendations to the state of Connecticut. As a result of that, the committee made a motion to request that the RTM jointly draft a letter to the COG and appropriate state representatives that addresses Branford's concern of flooding and safety issues on Route 146. This letter was drafted, it was sent out to all committee members, everybody on the committee approved of the wording, I believe it was sent to the full RTM as well, and put that in form of a motion, which we would approve sending that letter to the COG, which we do have to do before December 31st to have it made a matter of public record in their meeting.
Hey, any discussion from Representative Flanagan, any discussion from members of the RTM? Any discussion from members of the RTM? Any discussion from members of the public?
Have a comment, please?
Speaking, please?
Wayne Cook, you're going to throw me off again?
Go ahead, Wayne.
What I want to say is this, you know, and I don't have plenty to say after I say this, as far as this motion goes, the RTM could have done a lot more. You know, you could have backed Jay Medlin, but you didn't get into it to the extent that, you know, you could have, but that goes without saying, you haven't done it yet. And the truth of the matter is, that COG is not going to do anything. We said that at the meeting, but if you want to send a letter to them, that's fine. What we also said was to send a letter to everybody you possibly can that would have something to do with this, with the clout of the RTM behind the letter. Public safety, I'm sorry, DOT, public safety. Public safety, I'm sorry, uh, DOT, public safety, governor's office, police commission, everybody. Don't just limit it to COG because Steve Dudley's running the COG, and that's, I guarantee that study is going nowhere. He pretty much said he's not going to pay any attention to Lee Thaddeus Rhodes. So, I mean, you got to send this letter far more than just COG. That's going to be a waste of time, and that was said at the meeting, and I thought, I thought even Representative Henshaw agreed to that. Am I still speaking?
Yes, you are.
All right, thanks. So that's, that's all I'm going to say about this, but I think that this town has let down Jay Medlin and his family tremendously. I think we're still letting him down. I'm going on record in saying that. And I want to say one last thing, and then I'm just going to hang up. I am thoroughly, completely disgusted with the way that this meeting was handled tonight. You know, you don't like me, you don't like what I have to say, fine, but you don't throw people out of the meeting. You just don't do it. Ray Ingraham, that's just being a coward, period, just being a coward.
Anybody else in the public wishing to speak on this?
Uh, 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 Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Ricchio. Do you to Mr. Cosgrove? Well, we don't like Mr. Uh, 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 Mr. Cook, I'm sorry.
I mean.
No.
Representative Ricchio, that's it. You, no, no, no personal attacks. I've had it with you with us tonight, okay? No personal attacks, that's it.
And and the text messages are being sent to me.
That's it, Mr. Ricchio, that's it. Hey.
Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, go ahead.
Yes, I believe the the letter was actually technically addressed to the uh, the SCROG, um, s- study group was also addressed to DOT and was addressed to, I think, VHB, as I recall, is the, um, consultant that was hired by SCROG to to execute the body of this study. So I think that all, all three, and there are, there is a list of, uh, actual personnel from those organizations were the addressee of this, um, this particular letter, which can be read if you want, but, um, I think everybody's received it.
Hey, anybody else from the?
Moderator, this is Representative Ingraham.
Yeah, Representative.
Yeah, I, uh, this Representative Ingraham, I agree with, uh, Representative Henshaw. Uh, also, I know Anthony Alphon just put in the, uh, in the chat that, you know, the recommendation was to send it to, you know, all, um, connected, uh, state representatives, so that can be DEP, state reps, you know, and and the SCROG. It wasn't limited to the, uh, the SCROG, uh, survey team. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else from the RTM or from the public?
Yeah, I'd like to say, Mr. Moderator, Representative Toohill here. Okay, all right, can I, can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, uh, I would like to agree with what Representative Ingraham said. I think it's very important that we send copies of this letter to both um, us, um, a state Senator Cohen. Uh, we also want to send a copy to our state Representative, um, uh, Sean Scanlon, and also to, um, a state representative. Uh, uh, call me, please, thank you. Mr. Moderator, this is, uh, Peter Henshaw. Representative.
Go ahead, Representative Henshaw.
Uh, yes, I I I believe that, um, the formally what we were agreeing to do was to, um, have a vote by the RTM members on the letter, and then the, everybody that voted yes would have their names as individual representatives signed to the letter. Ray, is that your understanding of how this would be done?
Then Ingraham? We're muted, Ray.
I know, I, thank you, this is Representative Ingraham. That it actually be signed, I I don't see the logistics of, you know, of getting that.
Not signed with signatures, but signed with names of the representatives.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Brockett.
Representative Brockett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, yeah, Mr., uh, uh, the Majority Leader, Mr. Ingraham, Representative Ingraham is correct. I have the letter in in my system, um, as it's been edited and as everybody on the RTM has reviewed it. Um, for those that vote on this, uh, in the affirmative tonight, I will add their name to the letter. And I will take responsibility for sending the letter over the next, uh, two days to all of the entities if it passes tonight, um, including everybody that's mentioned, and I'll send the copy to the clerk as well, so you can read it at the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Representative Brockett. Anyone else from the RTM wishing to speak? If not, anybody from the public wishing to speak? Okay, hearing none? Is there any no votes? Is there any no votes? Is there any abstentions? Therefore, the motion passes. And, uh, Representative Brockett, this is Representative Flanagan, obviously you can include my name on there also.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Moderator, and for the record, uh, could I ask the clerk, uh, who is presently absent that, uh, did not vote on this?
You're.
Representative.
Representative Brockett, uh, Mr. Representative Lake, you're asking me who's absent tonight, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Who is absent as of right now?
Okay, Representative Sumro, Sumro is absent, and Representative Kelly is absent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That concludes, we go to item 12, which is a German, and I just one last little comment on my own part tonight that I think, uh, again, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, going forward for future meetings, I hope both RTM, public, and elected officials conduct themselves in a professional manner. I know some people did not do that tonight, but I will not allow it to continue. Representative Turelli. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Moderator, this is Representative Brockett. Before you, uh, Representative Turelli makes that motion, I would just like to, uh, I wish everybody a happy holiday si- uh, season and a safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Be safe, be safe tonight, and and try, don't shovel.
Don't shovel. Representative Flanagan, I hope this is a better.
The shovel, shovel.
All right, guys.
This is the moderator. Don, can you stay on for a moment?
We got too many.
All right, jingle bells, guys, jingle bell.
Motion by Representative Turelli to adjourn, who was seconded?
I second Representative Anderson.
Representative.
Thank you.
Hold on a second.
Bye.
Bye.
We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Good night.
Happy holidays.
So, where did you go?